Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for January 15, 2019, our first meeting of the New Year. Happy New Year to everybody at home watching and to everybody with us tonight in this hearing room. We have a couple of administrative matters to attend to, but before I do, allow me to welcome, as I always do, Area 58, who is present tonight and filming us. It's important that folks in the town of Carver see how their boards and committees operate, and we're happy that they're with us tonight. It's also my custom before every meeting to introduce everybody who may be interested in knowing who we are up here. So to my far left is Fran Mello, who is a permanent member of the board and comes to this board with a long business history, business management history, and her good common sense and business background comes in very handily on this board. To my immediate left is Eric Mueller, who for many years operated his own septic business in town, remains in the business currently, and is our resident expert for all matters septic. To my immediate right is Sharon Clark, the vice chair, who has many, many years of title experience and knows, I think, I fear, more than I'll ever know in this lifetime and probably the next about real estate. And to my far right is our newest member, who was sworn in recently as an alternate. This is Alan Germaine, who sits on many boards and committees in the town of Carver. His face may be familiar to some of you watching at home. We're happy to have him with us as well. Mr. Burr is not coming tonight. Apparently, he's out of town. He would be the other member of this board, so we hope to see him on the next go-around. We have some minutes to take care of this evening. The last meeting that we had was on November 5, 2018. I have circulated these minutes already to members of the board so that we could expedite matters tonight, and I would like to ask everybody if they have any questions or comments, changes, or amendments that they might like to make.
I'm good.
I'm good.
And as Mr. Germaine did not sit on that meeting, he will not be voting on that one. So we have four voting members with regard to the acceptance of minutes on November 5, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written for November 5, 2018.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those minutes now are part of the official record, the minutes of November 5, 2018. Next, we have three public hearings on our agenda. These are all continued hearings, the first of which is case number 24-4A, the petitioner being David Mulcahy, DBA Oh Dear South Shore, P.O., Box 340, Kingston. The petitioner is requesting a variance pursuant to Section 5222 and Section 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 157 North Main Street in Carver, assesses map 24 lot 4A to construct an addition to the rear of a pre-existing nonconforming residence in a highway commercial district, said addition for the purpose of an office and the storage of business materials. Now, I have received and have handed to the board members, as I sat down this evening, a letter, actually, two letters. One dated November 15 from Attorney Cirky representing the petitioner, and another one dated January 14, 2019, addressed to me again from Mr. Cirky. And these letters basically say that he's had a meeting with Mr. Francis concerning this petition, Mr. Francis being the building commissioner in town, as we all know. And at that meeting, Mr. Cirky represents in his letter of November 15 of 2018 that it was his determination that the definition of tradesman, as defined in Article 6 of the Carver zoning bylaw, would be guided... What's the citation in the book for the size?
Mr. Woods did give me that, though, from the DPW, as far as his concern. He'd said he would drop that.
We'll need the citations on both of those. Including, "by the view of the planning board." And he then goes on to say that the planning board apparently has voted to support a determination that Mr. Mulcahy is indeed a tradesman, and so he's requesting that Mr. Francis make that determination himself as the building inspector by countersigning the letter of November 15. And I observe that on the bottom of that letter, Mr. Francis has countersigned, as of the date of November 29, 2018, certifying that, in his opinion, the definition of tradesman is such that it would not require relief from this board. The January 14, 2019, letter from Mr. Cirky simply says that, he references, Mr. Cirky does, that letter that I just talked about, the November 15, 2018, letter, and requests that the petition before this board from the Mr. Mulcahy, DBA Oh Dear South Shore, be withdrawn. And I observe Mr. Cirky in the audience. Do you have anything that you'd like to say? Did I represent those letters correctly for the record?
Much better than I did.
All right. I do observe that your letterhead has changed, Mr. Cirky, and that you're now first.
Well, and that's really merely because of the fact that three of my partners retired in the previous year, so I surfaced to become first merely by having not gotten the memo.
Well, you and I are sort of getting closer to retirement together, I think.
Yeah.
But in any event, I appreciate these letters coming in, and I would like to inquire the board members at this time whether they have any questions or comments. Mr. Germaine, please feel free to participate and ask any questions or comment as you see fit.
I'm also.
Does anybody like to comment on this?
I'm good.
Is anyone troubled by the fact that tradesman is being defined by the planning board in this case, and the zoning board is not now being asked to assist in that regard?
Yes, I am.
I am.
So let's hear it from the vice chair.
Here's what I thought. Mr. Germaine actually attended the meeting. I did watch it afterwards, and we had an opinion from council that Mr. Mulcahy's did not fall within, in our council's opinion, did not fall within a tradesman or craftsman So your avenue after that was to go, his avenue after that was to go to the planning board. In watching the planning board meeting, the planning board seemed to hang their hat on the idea that our bylaw says craftsmen, tradesmen, et cetera, et cetera. And what disturbs me, has no bearing on this case at this point, but what disturbs me is that the planning board is now interpreting what the words et cetera may be, and it fell on a very loose definition that Mr. Mulcahy gets a license from a department where it's not required, and Mr. Sinclair is considered a tradesman because he has a license and he's an electrician. I see those as two entirely different things, but it opens up the precedence that anyone who gets a license from any place, anywhere, anytime can now be a tradesman or a craftsman. It opens it up because he hung the entire definition on the word et cetera. I find that difficult. I find that precedent-setting. I find that onerous, and I find that to be something that the town needs to address in zoning, to spell it out. What does et cetera mean?
Mr. Germaine, what would you like to add to that?
Exactly the same, and they went so far as to say that even a painter, because an interior painter is not quote licensed, he is in fact still considered to be a tradesman. So now, exactly what Sharon said, the planning board is now going to get into the definition of your occupation. So if it's our fault as a town because we did not define further, et cetera, I think that we took that question to town council. Town council rendered a decision, and the planning board decided, no, we don't like that, so this is what we're going to make it. He is in fact a tradesman. I think that Sharon's 100% right. I think it sets a bad precedent, but that's just, you know, that's my two cents worth.
Again, it has no bearing, my opinion on this has no bearing on this particular petition. The planning board has, you know, taken it over by their definition of what a tradesman is or a craftsman, and in this particular instance, I do disagree, and in this particular instance, I think it's something that the town needs to redefine.
Mr. Mueller, would you like to add to this?
No, looking in depth, that might be something that's a town has to look at and put further definition into, you know, the tradesman detail.
Ms. Mello.
Aye, stand with the town's lawyer.
Well...
What say you?
The petitioner, and I said this the last time we were all in here, the petitioner has filed before this board and now is requesting that this board take action by allowing its petition to be withdrawn. Do we have to allow that to happen? Can our voice still not yet be heard?
I believe that we, my feeling is that in a request to withdraw, we have no bearing not to allow him to withdraw, and whatever concerns we have, as he goes rightfully forward in another board, as we address it in a different manner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that she's right, especially where Mr. Francis has signed off on it also.
Changed his mind.
I think that slammed the door on this board doing anything with it.
That's a good point.
Any comments by board members to my left?
I have no further comments.
None.
Nobody calls me, Mr. Chairman, on this board.
It's my first day.
We're very informal.
We do feel in trouble.
I'm not so sure that I see it in such a black and white way, that once a petition has been filed, we must stand down if there's a request to withdraw. It seems like that's what you folks are suggesting, that we must stand down. The petitioner has opened this door, and for us to stand down, it could be argued that we're allowing the planning board to become a superboard over the ZVA. Everybody understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes.
So what comments, what comments does anybody have about this point?
That may be, that may be what appears to be happening now, but I don't think it's anything we have any jurisdiction over to take part in.
Because they were drawing.
Because they were drawing.
And what I just said doesn't resonate with you?
It does resonate, but it's more of an internal matter, I think, between boards and the fact that Alan and I agree on the fact that our zoning needs to be fixed, and that's neither Mr. Mulcahy's problem. I think it's a planning board problem, and it's an issue that we, as a board, perhaps should send a formal letter to the planning board or have a meeting with them and express our concerns. But as far as this particular petition in front of us, we'll not hear any testimony, we'll not hear... Another board has basically rendered the town council's opinion as moot.
Well, they have, they have decided not to accept town council's opinion.
Exactly.
And I've sat up here long enough now and have said enough to all of you for you to realize that I don't always agree with town council either. However, in this case, I found her arguments compelling, and there was testimony taken on this case.
There was.
A considerable amount of testimony taken on this case. And now, whoop, the rug gets pulled because they go to a different board who decides to give them what they were looking for from us that they realized they were having trouble getting from us in the first place. At least, this is how I'm seeing it. Fran, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, when we took testimony to begin with, Mr. Cirky did come here saying that he felt that the reason he did not have to be here was because, under our zoning bylaws, his applicant fell under those guidelines. Town council said that is not true. I think the planning board has a problem because of how they behaved by ignoring town council's advice, and as far as I know, not having town council come, give them a further explanation, that would allow them to ignore that advice. So I kind of, you know, I do, I feel closer to how you feel, that they just kind of board-hopped until they found the board they needed.
So for purposes of tonight, the question is, do we allow this motion to withdraw or do we proceed on the merits? And I think what I'm hearing from my right is that we allow the motion to withdraw, but I'm not quite sure what the opinion is of the members to my left.
Yeah, we'd have to allow the case to withdraw, but it's going to need some...
Well, I think we take our argument somewhere else.
Yes, yes.
I think that's going to be difficult to do now because this sets the, this sets the bar. So now, the planning board will now decide what the word et cetera means.
Until we go to town meeting probably next year and fix it. But everyone else on town is on notice right now that if you can get under et cetera, you are now a craftsman.
Why can't...
And what happens when it's a different, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
What happens when it becomes a different occupation that, instead of it being considered a tradesman, we're going to make it something else, and well, that'll be okay too because that falls under et cetera? This opens a whole can of worms, and I don't know that it's the applicant's fault.
It's not the applicant's fault.
I think it's the...
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I think it's the fault of the wording of the, which is the reason why we employ town council. I think the fault with the planning board was that they refused to accept town council. That's what we pay them for. And I agree with Stephen. While I don't always agree with town council, that's the choice we've made, that's the path we've taken, to determine the rights and the wrongs. And I think that that avenue was overlooked by the planning board in their effort to do whatever it is they do.
But why wouldn't we be able to turn back to town council with this scenario and say, and get their opinion as to whether or not we still have jurisdiction over this?
I'd be fully in favor of that.
Based upon a flawed process.
I don't have a problem tabling this until the next meeting and let town council look at it. I don't know how, what this involves because Robert Francis has signed off on this. Now, we have a town employee who's our building commissioner that's going along with this letter and the planning board's decision, so I don't know how we would undo that.
Well, other than it's the opinion of Robert Francis that gets them to us, everything, everything here has to start with a denial from something else. So he originally denied them as being, as of right, so the judgment of the planning department was to go to planning board and possibly come to us. They came to us, too. I think if Robert Francis has changed his mind or been persuaded, as we used in the last meeting, then he's negated the original application.
But they were already here.
Yeah.
I know. Changed his mind.
So at the point in time that, just as a matter of jurisdiction, at the time the public hearing was open, this became our case. Didn't become his anymore, or the planning board's, but our case. So again, the question that I'm raising, and we may not be able to get to an answer tonight, is do we just say, oh, well, never mind, let it go, or do we take a different approach?
May I be heard at some point?
At some point, not yet. Go ahead. What were you going to say?
Identify the point.
What point?
You just said at some point.
Oh, at some point?
Give me the point.
Either tonight, or at town meeting, or inquiry to town council.
And what would your question to town council be?
Are we obligated legally to accept a withdrawal once the case has been open before the ZVA? You know what I think? I think the answer's going to come back no. I think she's going to say that we're not obligated to accept a withdrawal, that we can go to a decision on the merits. Could be wrong. I think that's what she's like going to say.
If that were the case, then I would, I would suggest that that's the only way we're going to stop this from happening over and over and over again until we change this bylaw. So if it is to be an opinion of council, and this board wants to go along with that recommendation, and that's how it comes out, that would head off, we're not trying to necessarily hurt this individual, but it would head off the next guy. And I sit on conservation, as Mr. Cirky knows, and I talk a lot about precedent because we hear a lot about that, and it's, that's become a big deal within conservation, as it is also going to be a big deal with planning. So I'm in full agreement that I'd like to see an opinion come out of council.
As to...
The validity of, do we have to withdraw?
Do we have to allow a request to withdraw?
Do we have to allow the request to withdraw after it's already been brought before the Just because they've gotten what they want now and the building inspector has decided to accept that, so you're good to go, after the building inspector denied it.
Yeah, he changed his mind. It was a no, and then it was a yes, and in between, there was a lot of conversation going on with the planning board.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but I have, I watched the postings. I watch how the meetings are posted, and it was surprising to me that the last meeting, no mention of tradesman, craftsman, under the bylaw for moving forward with planning. And I'm like, they kept talking about tradesman, craftsman, tradesman, and now, all of a sudden, that language has disappeared. And I think, I just find that surprising when that is the only way they got there, the definition of that.
Ms. Clark, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Well, I'm trying to play this out, and I'd like to hear it from Mr. Cirky after this, but I'm trying to play this out. So your suggestion is that we don't accept his withdrawal?
No, I'm not suggesting. I'm throwing these out as issues for our consideration. And I think Mr. Germaine Allen makes some cogent points.
I guess I'm, I'm seeing two things. I'm seeing the big picture. We need to fix the bylaw, and we need to, as we discussed with planning board, we need to narrow them down a little bit, not give them as much broad interpretation of many of the bylaws. And then I see this case. I see this case as finished at this, in this forum, but that's for the board to decide, and there'll be only four members voting on this, because Mr. Burr is not here.
Mr. Cirky, briefly.
In my initial petition to this board, because Mr. Francis sent us here, I requested a variance to the extent necessary to construct this addition, because I did not believe that I needed to be here, but Mr. Francis sent me here. We subsequently, and I say we, I'm talking about Mr. Cole and myself, sat down with Mr. Francis, and he said that he was not about to change his mind unless the planning board voted that Mr. Mulcahy was indeed a tradesman. In other words, he agreed to wait and see what the planning board thought.
So he was going to allow the planning board to instruct him as to the definition of tradesman?
He indicated to me and to Mr. Cole that he wanted to hear from the planning board. He wanted some backup. And so we went to the planning board, and the planning board voted that, under their reading of the bylaw, in this particular case, Mr. Mulcahy was indeed a tradesman. And so we went back to Mr. Francis afterwards, and in light of the planning board vote, he changed his mind.
To what extent did the planning board, Mr. Cirky, because I wasn't there, talk about town council's opinion?
They were aware of it.
Did they talk about it in public session, or...
Yes, they did.
They did.
And I want to remind you that part of town council's opinion is the following.
Case law holds that discretion in determining the meaning of local zoning provisions rests with the municipality. Notwithstanding the above, and that is her opinion about this particular contractor, it is the board's discretion whether the proposed use falls within the definition of tradesman, and any decision by the board should be upheld if it is not beyond the scope of its authority and is not based on legally untenable grounds nor unreasonable, whimsical, capricious, or arbitrary.
All axiomatic.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about. But have you received a written decision from the planning board on this case?
No, we're going before them on the 22nd. The matter was continued on the special permit that we applied for because of the use and also for site plan approval. So the decision of the planning board on the merits has not yet been made, and we're hoping that the hearing on site plan approval, which was continued, and the hearing on the special permit under the Water Protection District, which will open on the 22nd, we're hoping both of them will conclude on the 22nd and that the board will then vote. And, but I don't know whether that will in fact occur all on the 22nd. I just know that the hearing on site plan approval will resume and the hearing on the special permit will open, because we agreed to seek a special permit under the Water Protection District as well. And so those matters are coming before the 22nd, and we'll have to see what they decide on the merits. But they made the threshold determination on Mrs. Sinclair's motion that, that Mr. Mulcahy was indeed a tradesman, and Mr. Francis, having told Mr. Cole and myself that he would be guided by what the planning board felt, made his decision by countersigning the letter that I wrote.
It sounds to me, and I don't want to slant this unnecessarily, but it sounds to me like when this case came in and Mr. Francis reviewed it, his view was that this petitioner, the petitioner that you represent, did not qualify as being a... the petitioner that you represent, did not qualify as being a tradesman under the Town of Carver bylaws. He then deferred to the Planning Board, as you've just described.
Yes.
Planning Board said, well, we disagree with you, Mr. Francis, and we disagree with Town Council, and we want it this way. Meaning, we view this as a tradesman situation.
Yes.
So another concern here, and again, this may be more of a big-picture concern than a small-picture concern.
Yeah.
But another concern that I have here is when one of our professional staff makes a judgment, and then one of our legal folks working for the town makes a judgment, which are then allowed to be overruled with not very much explanation to us as to why they decided in the manner that they did, despite the fact that we have legal counsel saying, no, this shouldn't be the case, and we've got the building inspector saying, at least initially, this shouldn't be the case. So I appreciate the arguments of, of Allen and Sharon in this regard. I struggle with this myself. Certainly on a big-picture level, I think everybody here can see this. On a smaller-picture level, the question is, what do we do with this right now? And what you just said was interesting to me, because apparently, this is still an active case before the Planning Board.
Yes, the, the merits, you see, if, if, if...
So if the Planning Board, not to interrupt, but if the Planning Board is not done with this.
It is not.
Then maybe we should have one of us go before the Planning Board and express our concerns about what to do here, if anything. And in the meantime, perhaps we should be inquiring of Town Council whether this case should be withdrawn simply on the motion of the petitioner, after it's already been opened as a public hearing.
Let me just respond to that, if I can.
Sure.
With all due respect, I wrote my letter not as a request to withdraw, but as an announcement that I am withdrawing. I don't believe that you have the right to prevent me from withdrawing. I came to the board because Mr. Francis sent me here, and without a variance from this board, assuming I needed one, I couldn't go before the Planning Board.
But your letter says that you are withdrawing your petition.
Yes. I'm not asking for permission to withdraw. I'm telling you that I'm withdrawing it.
Don't you need to ask our permission
No.
...once a case has been opened?
No.
So would you object to us asking Town Council if that would be her opinion as well?
You can do whatever you wish. I can't prevent you. But the fact of the matter is that I would've thought that since the underpinning of the case that brought me to you has shifted, and I don't need to be before you at all because of Mr. Francis's change of mind, that you'd be happy that the case is gone. If you have a problem with the Planning Board, or if you have a problem with the bylaw, then by all means, perhaps an article to amend the text of the bylaw might be in order for a future town meeting. But what brought me to you in the first place was an opinion that I didn't agree with. That's why I said I'm asking for a variance to the extent necessary, because if I needed a variance for the use, there was nothing that the Planning Board could do to help me, because if I didn't get a use variance, special permit and site plan approval would be useless to me.
Yep, you made that clear on the first go-around.
Right. So Mr. Francis said, I don't wanna make this call on my own, but I will make the call to change my mind if the Planning Board agrees. And the Planning Board, which we were, made, made that vote, and Mr. Francis, based on his initial decision to be guided by the Planning Board, countersigned the letter. And so there's nothing I need from you.
But why didn't you go to the Planning Board first?
Well, because, because I, according to Mr. Francis, when he said that I needed a use variance, the Planning Board has no authority to grant use variances, only this board does. So I came to the plant, to the zoning board, asking for a use variance. And then I went back to Mr. Francis to see whether there was a way in which he could change his mind. And he did change his mind after being guided by the Planning Board.
But did you go back? Why did you go back to Mr. Francis? Why didn't you let it work its way through here?
Because if Mr. Francis changed his mind, there's no need for me to be here.
And that's why I feel like it's been shopped around.
It hasn't, maybe, as Sharon said, the only basis for an applicant coming before you is because he wants something that the building inspector decides he can't grant on his own. And that's why he initially sent me here. And I never bought into the notion that I had to be here. And then he changed his mind, not because I got him into a dark room and twisted his arm, but I, I sat with him in the company of the Director of Planning and Community Development, and he, he decided to be, that, that he, he didn't wanna make the call on his own, but he wanted to make the call based on what the Planning Board said.
But why did you go back to him? Why didn't you just let it work its way through the boards?
Well, because if I could change his mind, I wouldn't have to be here. And, and I'm not ashamed to say that.
I know, but you started the process with the board. That's what I have a problem with.
I did, because he sent me here.
And then you also started the process of changing, trying to change his mind.
Oh, yeah.
And looking for the avenues to change his mind.
Yeah, and I, I, and, and, and I changed his mind.
I...
Have any of us changed our minds in the course of our lives?
Well, to, to be fair, too, during the discussion of the first hearing, we, we actually offered that up.
Yeah.
Saying...
I believe you said that.
I might have.
Yeah.
But...
You said that...
Persuaded. I think we used the word persuaded.
Yeah.
In that this board cannot grant use variances, so we were, our hands were kind of tied, as it were.
Yeah.
And you were going back to the Planning Board for further discussion with them. My issue, and it's, and it's not with your client
Yeah.
...and not with this particular case.
Yeah.
My issue remains that the Planning Board wildly, broadly interpreted, et cetera. And in a situation which I do not think it's merited, I do not think this is a craftsman. If the Planning Board wants to believe that he is, that's fine. Tradesman, okay. I, I don't think this fits the guidelines of, of what we have traditionally here in town as a tradesman. However, your lawyer, the word et cetera
Yeah.
...allows for broad interpretation, and they used it.
Yeah.
The fact that you started here, I do believe you were sent here first, the same as, I mean, we have half a dozen cases every year or so where they were sent here, they didn't belong here, and we dispense of it. It's not sadly that unusual to have cases sent here that do not belong here for a number of different reasons. Just maybe one of them.
Yeah.
So my issue lies with the way the Planning Board circumvented what I think is the bylaw. And I think that's a whole different process
Yeah.
...for us to fix.
Right.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think there are a number of possible avenues at this juncture that we need to think about. One, we can allow the withdrawal of this previously opened public hearing, as Mr. Cersei is requesting on behalf of his client.
I'm not requesting it.
You are withdrawing, or attempting to withdraw. I consider that to be a request.
It's not. It's an announcement that I'm withdrawing.
And...
And I, I don't mean to be difficult, but any person who appears before a tribunal and decides that he does not need the relief that he was initially seeking has a right to withdraw.
That's your legal argument, which you've expressed repeatedly, and I respect that.
Yeah.
So we could allow that to happen. That's one possible avenue this evening. A second possible avenue is to continue this case beyond the time period that the Planning Board will be taking this up again, so that a representative or representatives of this board can be heard with regard to their concerns, and then we come back at a later date and take this up again. Another possibility would be to, again, continue this case for an opinion from Town Council as to whether we have to allow the withdrawal that Attorney Cersei says he, he can have by right, as I understand it. So those are some options that I'm just throwing out there, or some avenues that I'm just throwing out there. We can go to a vote and, and get rid of this, or we can postpone making a decision about getting rid of it until we hear from Town Council and/or have an opportunity to speak to the Planning Board. So I'm wanting to get some feedback, feedback from the board.
Personally, we'd like to see it go before the Planning Board with an opinion, and let Town Council look at it. If the Planning Board votes in favor of this, then we're done anyway. We have no recourse at that point. We can't, we can't, I don't believe we have the power to step back in and, and overrule. I think it will, if nothing else, it sets us up with an opinion from Town Council and the Planning Board being put on notice, it sets us up for the next time that there's an et cetera. And perhaps it'll be a little bit more respectful of it not getting interpreted the way it got. I also think, and, and this is, again, nothing to do with your client, I think that what you did here was, you're, I agree with, with Francis. I think you ran around and, and filed all the petitions you could file, and hoped that somebody came through and did something on your behalf. Personally, I think this should've been denied by the Planning Board, and then you should've made your filing with the Zoning Board of Appeals. You didn't do that because the Planning Board hasn't even ruled yet. So now, and it's an active case in front of two separate boards, and now we've involved the, the building commissioner, who's stuck in the middle of the whole thing with a no initially, and now a yes. So does this mean that the Planning Board next week will direct the building commissioner into doing something else, that he's not sure he can or can't do?
He didn't direct the building inspector. The building inspector agreed to be guided by the Planning Board's decision.
I was at that meeting. There was extensive conversation. And I don't believe that the vote to accept the word tradesman was unanimous. I think there was a descender. I'm not exactly sure to that. I won't swear to it. I have to go read the minutes and look. But I was at that meeting, and there was a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of dissatisfaction over not accepting council's word. 'Cause that's the reason we have council. So this, this whole, this whole case is not without its own controversy.
And I, I will say this, as any good attorney would, Mr. Cersei did the best that he could for his client in getting the relief that his client was asking for. So we don't cast dispersion, certainly I don't, Mr. Cersei. We're in the same profession, so we do what we can to represent our clients as zealously as we can, but it does seem like there has been a lot of, I wanna say irregularity on this case, but there's, there seems to be some lack of communication, let's put it that way. Some lack of communication.
Process.
Yeah. The, the process did not really work all that well in this case. As Allen just said, we've got the building commissioner apparently changing his mind. We have the Planning Board voting to not accept the opinion of Town Council. And we have this case still open at this level, and the Planning Board's still not done on this case on their end.
If I could just say, the vote of the Planning Board on November 13th was five to zero to one that Mr. Mulcahy was a tradesman.
Okay.
So there was no negative vote.
I apologize. I thought there was one descender.
Zero to one.
Okay.
Well, there was an abstention, because they now have an alternate.
So the question for us tonight is how we deal with this. And again, it, we either vote to have this case withdrawn, or we continue for one or two different reasons. First reason would be to allow the Planning Board process to play out, and maybe one or more of us going there and expressing our concerns about the procedure that's occurred in this case. And the other possibility, or the other reason to vote to continue would be, at the same time, to seek further opinion from council as to whether we must allow withdrawal after a public hearing has been opened. So I throw these out. If anybody has any other ideas, please feel free to voice them, because I think we're getting to the end of this debate.
I would absolutely like an opinion of council. Whether we vote to let this thing go this time, I still would like to bring this before Town Council and get a...
On the issue of whether we have to allow...
Whether we have to allow, shall we know for the next time?
Do you have rules and regulations that the board has promulgated for the conduct of its affairs?
In some areas, yes.
Is one of those areas, when and under what circumstances petitions can be withdrawn?
Ms. Clark?
I would like to close the hearing.
You, you'd like to close the hearing?
I would like to then vote to accept the request.
Not a request, as Mr. Cersei has pointed out, but...
Well...
Vote...
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing, and then go to a vote on the merits to withdraw. Is that what you want? Yes?
Yes, and then if, I, I don't find any, any use in or validity too much in keeping it open, keeping this end of the case open, so that one of us can go to the Planning Board at your next hearing and go...
You can do that anyway.
I, we can do it anyway, but it would only be to the point of, that, the point that Allen and I have made, that we find the idea of craftsmen and tradesmen, et cetera, to be far too open to interpretation, and I suggest we need to clamp that down. And we will use this particular case as our example. But as far as coming back here, I think you will not be required to. I don't think you have any intention to, and I don't see any reason to keep this open.
Ms. Miller?
I'd like to get an opinion from Town Council.
On what issue?
On whether or not, once this, once a case is given open, a petitioner can withdraw at any point. I have a real problem with the Planning Board ignoring Town Council, and I don't know how to address that.
I have an issue where the building inspector follows our guidance. He follows the zoning, we're here to enforce the laws. He's, and, and he takes our best interpretation, but then is swayed from the Planning Board, where I don't know how they can give him guidance on our zoning law, our zoning bylaws. I think Town Council does have to be brought in for an opinion on...
To be, to be fair, Eric, there's been, as I said, half a dozen easily...
Right.
The, the Blouse case just recently, we turned to her and said, you don't need to be here. So we simply issued some kind of an opinion that you don't need to be here. And, and his original interpretation was wrong.
But that was our, Sharon, that was our opinion. I don't think
Exactly.
...we feel the same way about this one.
But in our laws, we wanted council's interpretation of tradesman, because we felt it wasn't considered a tradesman.
And we got it.
And we got it from council.
And then the Planning Board said...
Correct.
Never mind, we're, we're gonna do what we wanna do anyway.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
But I think that situation is not the applicant's fault.
Yeah, it's not, nothing to do with the applicant.
And I think to delay this and hold him up even longer is gonna create hardship. I don't think it's fair. I think the Planning Board sidelined us, and I don't think it's fair to hold the applicant hostage. But I certainly am absolutely gonna be at the hostage, but I certainly am absolutely gonna be at the next planning board hearing, meeting, and I personally will say something. I'd like to have as much of the board join me that would like to, and I would absolutely like to get an opinion from town council that, once you start the process, can you just decide to pull the plug because you like the decision you got upstairs as opposed to downstairs?
Well, if you make a decision denying the variance, I have a, I have an opinion that I don't need one, all right? So what's the point of rendering a decision that's useless?
And I would never go against what you think, Mr. Cirque. I'm not trying to say that you're wrong, but I am saying that, I'm real big on what happens the next time. We get back into this precedent stuff, and I don't want to open this can of worms to where the planning board becomes the decision maker for the word et cetera. And that could open, that could open a whole can of worms that nobody wants to even entertain.
Well, that's a good reason, perhaps, for working on that text of the bylaw and perhaps trying to make it clearer.
To answer Ms. Mello's, to address her concern, what can we do? There's leverage here. We know what this leverage is. It's to keep this case open. That's the leverage, if you choose to exercise it. If you choose to exercise it. So we have a hard decision to make, or maybe it's not so hard, depending upon how you're Do I hear a motion to close this hearing at this time, or do I not hear that motion?
So moved.
Now, think about this. Who wants a second, if anybody? I don't hear anybody making a second to the motion to close this hearing at this time. What is the, what's the desire of the board? Somebody want to make a motion or a suggestion? Alan, you want to make a suggestion, even though you can't formally make a motion, and then we can entertain it, since you seem to have a strong opinion on this?
I was not in favor of tying up the initial permit, but since there's no second, I would like to see a motion that reads in the order of this go before, an opinion for town council, and the planning board be put on notice, that this is exactly what we're doing, what we do. I would also like to suggest that the chairman of this committee notify the chairman of the planning board that this is the outcome of this whole thing, and this is where we're at, and, you know, perhaps it's time to have the two powers that be have a sit-down so that we don't get ourselves into this mess, because this is gonna create, somewhere along the line, this is gonna create another lawsuit, and another court case, and more expense by the town to decide on who's correct and who's, you know, and that's not right. There should never be an issue before two boards at the same time. This should have been done with the planning board and either denied, or it should have played out to the end of whatever that was gonna be. That's the reason for the magic word appeals. The zoning board of appeals is exactly that. When you've exhausted your other avenues, this is where you go. You don't go here in the middle of the planning board because you think you might have to end up here. And frankly, if Mr. Francis was incorrect in his initial denial, and that caused this whole thing to happen, then something needs to be said to Mr. Francis in the future. But I can't understand how, for the life of me, this can be opened before two boards at the same time, and neither one has voted on it yet. So we say yes, they say no, they say yes, we say no, now what? We're back to square one again, trying to figure out how we're gonna fix this. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. So I absolutely would like to see an opinion by town council. I don't disagree with Stephen at all that we have the right to dig in here. I just don't think it's fair to the applicant. I don't think he's the guy that is, should be punished by this, because my personal opinion is the planning board had no right to make a determination on the occupation, especially since council had said, "This is the way it should be." Planning board, I don't believe, had the, had the right to say, "We don't care what town council said, we're doing it this way." I absolutely agree with Stephen also that Mr. Cirque did his job, he did exactly what he was paid to do, and I have no problem with that whatsoever. This is certainly nothing personal. I don't like the disparity between the two boards. I don't like the motion being open between the two boards at the same time. That's not the purpose of the zoning board of appeals. You don't apply for one permit and run down and file an appeal in case that one turns it down. And that's my two cents worth, three cents worth, and four cents worth.
Sharon, can you frame some sort of approach that will satisfy the, I think, the direction in which the board seems to be going tonight, that you can live with?
That I can live with?
Yes, yeah.
The only thing that I would consider would be, since, since the board is not willing to close the hearing, it has to be unanimous vote between the four of us now.
Among the four of us, yes.
The only avenue I see where, would be to continue the hearing for one more month in order to find out whatever it is you want to find out from council.
And, and the process.
And the process, and then, I mean, Mr. Cirque has no intention of presenting any evidence, whether we, whether we close the hearing or not.
I debated about whether to come here tonight. But I decided to come.
Well, you know that we like to see you, now that you're number one on the letterhead.
Exactly.
All right, so you can live with that.
I can live with a one-month continuation as the board will not vote to close the hearing.
And during that time, a, an opinion from council with regard to the issue of withdrawal, and an appearance, as we see fit, as members of the board at the planning, the next planning board meeting. Which is when, Mr. Cirque?
Twenty seconds.
Ms. Mello, you've been vocal about this, but what say you?
I say, I, well, my other question is, is the board, how is the board going to address, how is this board going to address the planning board? Through a letter? Through, I mean, you know, with our concerns?
Are you asking me, or are you asking all of us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, if you're asking me, I have found it through, through long experience, that it's best to address concerns face-to-face rather than through a letter. Now, we can certainly do a letter if that's the sense of the board.
I'd like to have a letter, just so they have it in their file, but I agree with you, face-to-face is the way to go.
So we can do both. We can have a letter, as you suggest, for the file, which is not a bad idea at all.
It's in the record that way.
In the record that way, and then one or more of us can appear at the planning board and express whatever thoughts and concerns that we might have.
Would we appoint someone to do that?
We, that would be one way to do it, for sure. So what's, what's your thought about that, you guys? Eric, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
And Sharon, what's your thought about that? We continue for one month?
Continue for one month, and then...
We get an opinion from council, we do a letter, and how do you want to do the feedback to the planning board? Do you want one of us to go? Do you suggest all of us go? What is your thought on that?
I think it'd be best intentions to get that board and our board together.
I...
Good luck.
My, my feeling, I mean, you're talking about a bunch of working people trying to all get together on an off-working night. My suggestion would be that perhaps one or two of us, I'm volunteering, Alan and I right now.
I get along very well with them.
Meet with Stephen Cole, meet with the planning director first, and, and maybe, no? Okay.
I'm shaking my head no, because the decision that was made in this case was made by the planning board.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
It was made by the building inspector.
Building inspector.
Yeah, we'll talk to him, too.
In concert, in concert with the planning board.
He's, he's on our list.
You know, I don't want to tell you how to do a catch-up, but the target here, you have to be very careful who you're displeased with, because the building inspector's decision to seek the advice of the planning board, the planning board gave him their opinion, and then the building inspector made his decision. So, just to offer that to you.
Well, I think several bases will get covered.
Who can, who can go before the planning board next week?
I can.
Alan can, and would you like to?
I would not want to speak to them.
Oh, I'll do it.
You want to go with me?
I will attend the meeting with Alan, if Alan would speak.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. They hate me anyways.
Can I ask you this?
Well, on my way.
Sharon, would you like to be part of that delegation to the planning board?
I don't have my calendar with me, but I...
You can make it.
I think I can make it.
Okay. Eric, you want to go, or are you good?
I'm gonna make every attempt to be there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, do I hear a motion to continue for one month?
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing for one month.
A second.
And Mr. Mueller has seconded. Does anyone have any further discussion or question they'd like to raise before we go to a vote on this?
Just to be clear, we're continuing...
For one month.
These two letters for one month. In the meantime, we will do the...
Contain town council opinion?
Town council opinion as to our...
Withdrawals.
Withdrawals, and...
And also, we're continuing to allow a representative or representatives of this board to appear before the planning board at their next public hearing on this matter.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Everybody?
Yes.
So, did somebody, you seconded?
I seconded.
So you seconded with those caveats?
Yep, with those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
So we have to decide on a date for Mr. Cirque, and let's see if we can agree on that now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cirque, you said the planning board was the 22nd.
The 22nd.
And you thought all votes would be possibly taken care of then?
February 12th.
I'm hoping.
That's the second Tuesday.
When the site plan approval was continued, the special permit was open.
February 12th.
Twenty seconds.
When is school vacation week for people with kids?
That's February something.
Yeah, we'll bump it a month.
For those that don't have kids, like me.
So what, what date are we looking at, so we can move this along?
February 12th. February 12th, all right, with you guys?
Is that school vacation week?
Is that vacation week?
No, that's the week before.
Are you going like Disney or anyplace?
Before.
That's the week before.
Is that Earl?
Yeah.
So the 12th?
Yep, 12th.
And that's after the planning board meets, right?
The 22nd is when the planning board meets, that's next Tuesday.
So our next hearing on this would be February 12th.
Can I ask you this? We know that the planning board sued the planning board in the not-too-recent past.
The way around.
Oh, the planning board...
Yes.
Sued, sued, I'm sorry, yes.
Did we answer that quick enough?
How much of this is a continuation of inter-municipal body rivalry?
Nothing.
Speaking for myself, none.
Not on our part.
I take exception to that. I don't believe that's the case at all.
Okay.
I think the planning board, well, and I wasn't here for this, I've done a lot of research on it, I think the planning board way overstepped. I think the zoning board did exactly what they had to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in terms of how others may perceive this.
That can't be helped.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Did we pass that last one?
Which board is that?
Madam Clerk, did we pass that last one? Okay. Ms. Mello?
I'd like to make a motion that we also draft a letter...
Yes.
...to the planning board outlining our concerns as they relate to this case and the definition, or the, the broad interpretation that they took.
Yep, and that letter should be done and be able to be presented no later than January 22 at their next meeting. So the next question would be, before we go to vote on that motion, who should be drafting that letter? Mr. Germain has been very articulate about this tonight, as has Ms. Clark and everybody else to my left. I'm certainly prepared to draft a letter and sign it, but I think it would be more forceful if all of us could sign. So why don't I suggest that Ms. Clark and Ms. Germain, Mr. Germain, draft something, and then circulate it to the rest of the board members?
By next Tuesday?
Yes. This doesn't have to be a book, right?
But I always relive the impression that attorneys could write the most forceful letter.
Well, sometimes we do.
Well...
You guys know all the good punctuation.
I'll edit.
I'll, I'll write a draft. You were, you could, I only watched them, I'll write a draft, you edit it, you send it back.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes, yes. So your motion for the drafting of a letter suitable for presentation of the planning board at their next meeting?
Yep.
And it was suggested that Ms. Clark and Mr. Germain collaborate on that, and then circulate it to the rest of us for edits. Is that correct?
I just want to know if you throw everybody under the bus on their first meeting? Or am I just the lucky one?
You're just special.
All of your comments are well-taken, Alex. Thank you for your contributions.
And then...
And what else?
Also request a meeting? Weren't we going to also do face-to-face meeting with the planning?
Well, that, that would be the purpose of appearing on January 22.
Okay.
So do I hear a second to Ms. Mello's motion for a letter to be drafted expressing the concerns of this board with regard to the circumstances that occurred in this instance?
And can I just ask, is that letter to be sent to the planning board, Stephen Cole and Michael Melonowski?
Sure.
I just want to know...
Yeah, I'd even copy them.
Copy all of them?
Sure.
I'd even copy the building inspector's.
Okay.
But I wait until we can get a consensus on what the text should be.
Exactly, right, right, right.
Okay. So is everybody good with that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? We all clear? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so...
Send me to the copy room.
Sure. A little fun reading.
Pardon me?
A little fun reading for you, a little light reading.
Feel free to edit it and send it right back.
Well, it's been lovely.
Good night.
It's just where we guarantee seeing you again, see how this works?
Such a pleasure.
All seen Tuesday.
Nice wedding, although no one got married.
All right, well, I didn't expect that to go on so long.
Can I ask a question off the record regarding that?
We're on the record.
On the record, off the record?
No, 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 no.
Not in my case.
No, 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 cannot, will not. Next is a public hearing, continued from November 5, 2018, case number 49-53. The petitioner is David Taylor, 27 Leonard Street. The petitioner is requesting a variance pursuant to sections 2300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 27 Leonard Street in Carver. Assessors map 49 lot 53 to construct a freestanding 28-by-28-foot detached garage in the sideyard in a residential agricultural district. So I observed, Mr. Taylor is here...
Yes.
And your wife, your lovely Mrs. Taylor, who have been sitting patiently through all of this. And is there anything that you would like to add beyond what we discussed the last time? For the record, ladies and gentlemen, this board did conduct a site visit, and it was in the rain.
Heavy rain.
Heavy rain, so, yes, I want to...
It was in the puddle.
I want to move the town now to increase our stipend, because our clothes and hats were ruined. But in any event, all kidding aside, we did conduct a site visit, and we observed the location of the proposed garage in the presence of Mr. and Mrs. Taylor, and... And having said that, now is there anything further that you'd like to tell us?
Two other site visits after, the DPW supervisor, I'm not sure that's exactly what the title, I know they changed DPW to a different title. He came just to make sure the easement wasn't a sit. If we could push that garage back from the side yard, it wouldn't go behind the house, as my new drawings I'll show you in just a second. But it does encroach the easement, which is the drainage easement, which is a concern both for the DPW and for conservation at your request. I also had a conservation crew, committee came, or three, I think. I'm not sure you were there.
I was not.
I want to say three folks, it could have been four. It wasn't raining that day. And they said that there was no concern as far as conservation goes of the easement. And John said there was no issue with DPW that we could, if we had to, you know, encroach the easement line, he can access that easement from, you know, the corner. But because after meeting with you the first time, we said, let's potentially move the garage from where, where, because we've lived there for 25 years, we've always envisioned the garage being there, not being basically ignorant of building requirements or planning codes or zoning bylaws. So, when I went to Mr. Francis, you know, he explained to me, you can't be in front of the house and can't really be where you would like it to be, so let's take this process forward so we can to the zoning board. And, but in the meantime, I had drawn it up on my idea with the engineer where we would like it. But it really isn't in the greatest spot by your suggestions, that it was clearly in the front of the yard. So, we did push it back and rotate it as far as we could feasibly do, push it 50 feet away from the street, place 30 like we were. But it does, one corner, as you'll see, does really stick out basically in front of the house, from the house line by eight feet. So, that's where we are at.
So, you have some revised plans?
I revised the drawing. Right after the last meeting, the next day, I met with the engineer, so it was an easier CAD redraw. This is the new proposed, I've got copies for you.
One for me.
We got plenty.
That, that's fine. One for me, and we're good. So, if you could just push back a little so the
Yeah.
Okay.
This particular renovation could be split, that's what I drew though. I mean, I didn't put the front of the house on all of those
Hold on just a second.
But I just drew the front of the house line by that dotted line, so that piece of the garage would actually be in front. So, that's behind and that's
So, one corner of the garage.
One corner of the garage would actually be in front of that piece of property.
Do you have a copy of the previous plan?
Yeah.
I probably do, but
So, the new plan is less non-conforming than the old plan?
So, it's non-conforming
Is that right?
Because it's, it's now 50 feet from the street, place 30 something. We were at 32 before. This is the original one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It was
Yeah.
Clearly in the front yard and only 32 feet. So, it's
Oh, yeah.
Put back and rotated.
Yeah, he's best, you know.
This is the town house?
Well, here's where he is now. So, he's pushed back roughly another 18 feet. Is that right, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, and this is probably six feet off the easement. I mean, I guess the issue with getting any further back there based on the engineer, if you remember the site visit, if you went down that hill, you would have been wet. I mean, there is quite a grade difference. That's just aggravating. It's just tough for the
Did you, excuse me, sir, did you show that bylaw that I gave you last time?
But it was, the issue is my house isn't far enough back, that bylaw
That's what I wanted to add.
Yeah.
Because we didn't, we didn't have a distance for, on your house.
Yeah, my house is in a 60, isn't 100, I forget now the number.
Do you have a copy? Do you?
I do have a copy of that. I just don't remember if it was 60 or 100, but my house is not either.
Your, your house wasn't 60 feet away from the
Correct.
Okay.
My original, give me one side, I don't want to block your camera, but I'll, oh, here it is. This is what you gave me, I think. But I might have had that one already. And according, it might be 100 feet, but I see my house, that's just the plot plan, that's not measured from my, see, my house is only 62 feet, and I thought it said 100, yeah.
Well, yeah, provided that the accessory structure. Okay, so your house
Is only 62 feet back from this.
Okay.
So, one of the things, Mr. Taylor, as you go back, one of the things that we had asked you, as I recall, was whether there was some bylaw or wetlands rule or regulation, perhaps Mr. Jermaine can help us out here, that has to do with that drain adjustment and how far off the drain adjustment you have to be before you can engage in any construction. Were you able to do any research on that?
As I said, the committee came and there were no concerns about
Which committee?
The conservation committee. The building inspector came and then a week later, the conservation committee, three or four folks, I just don't remember if it was three or four.
Most likely would have been four.
A woman, I thought, she actually has the chairman, I don't know the group she was, she seemed to be the speaker of the group.
Brooke Monroe is the conservation specialist.
Okay.
She's our, she's a town employee, actually.
Okay.
And then the two gentlemen that would have been with her are members of the board.
One was the gentleman that I met the first time that was a zoning board member that you
That would be Jim. Jim, that's the, that's the chairman of the conservation committee, Jim Nowen. Did the other guy have a dog?
No.
Then it was savory more.
Well, regardless.
So, they came, no concerns about where the location is on that current plan. If we could encroach the easement, there was no wetlands concern.
All right, so
DPW
I guess what you're suggesting to us at this point is that with the revisions made, the re-siting of the garage, re-siting
Correct.
Of the garage, you are now less non-conforming than you were with the first version of this plan, is that true?
Yes.
So, what is it that you seek by way of relief from this board at this time, based upon your revised plan?
Well, it would be location because the corner of that garage is in front of the house, so that would be, that wouldn't pass Mr. Francis's building without his own permit, I should say.
And what about dimensions?
The size would also be, it's over 700 square feet.
Okay, so, this is my copy, is it?
Yes.
And this didn't come before conservation, am I correct in that, because I don't recall it being at a hearing?
It wasn't, it wasn't
This was like an FYI from conservation?
Right.
Informal discussion?
That's what, so I
So, there was no motion before conservation?
They just came and
I didn't think so.
I called, I went to the building folks' office and I thought, I was going to come back and meet her the next morning, and then when I came, she was already gone, and the woman from the office said, they're going to plan on being there tomorrow morning. I said, okay, so I went home, and then the next morning, they showed up, and then I walked through, and they said they would let the planning chairman, is that the gentleman that sits in the office across?
Probably Stephen Cole upstairs.
Across from the office, the building office, yeah. They said they would let him know that they felt there was no concern. That's how they let it.
What's the size variance, where is that?
784.
784.
DPW
It's 784.
Where do you go?
What's the square footage?
784.
784, okay.
The one with the garage in front of the house.
What's 2245?
22.
2235.
23 or 24?
22.
2245, that's the one.
What do we do, 23?
Accessory buildings.
That was on that same, I wanted to give you, Sharon, 700, if that's
Yeah.
Was on that same, below that.
Yep, 2245.
2245, B.
Yep, and C. Garage is over 700.
It's more C than it is B, isn't it?
Yeah, where are you signing that, Sharon?
It's 2245.
Page nine.
That's about size, 2245, C is size.
B is where it's in front of the property line.
Right.
And C is the size. Seven square feet. And his is 784. Because it meets all dimensional requirements.
But for those two.
But for those two. It needs to be, what'd you say, roughly eight feet in front of
Yes, it's, the location, unless we, you know, if we could push it back another on the plan, if you could push it back another couple of feet, it's just that's the iffy part until they get to the ground because of the
So, how much, we figured out what, the amount of relief that you need on the square footage of the proposed garage. That corner for which you need dimensional relief, how many feet are they going to need for that?
He said he drew a straight line, would you say it was eight feet?
It looks to be, an inch is 20 feet on that, so it looked to be eight feet by that, by that corner straight back on the right.
So, if we said 10 feet.
10 feet, I was going to say. You're confident that would give you enough?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the 50 and a half foot setback will maintain it? You'll, you'll keep that?
Right.
That's on the drawing?
Okay. Do you have anything further that you'd like to add, Mr. Taylor? Quite frankly, I'd rather hear from Mrs. Taylor. Both of you okay?
I'd rather hear that.
Okay.
Secret to a happy marriage.
Not cleaning off snow.
Mr. Taylor, you've given me this letter of John Woods dated November 7, 2018. Is this your only copy?
Yes.
It says, reading it into the record, Dave, meaning you, "I am writing this letter to let you and whom it may concern know that after my visit to your residence, I see no issue with you approaching the easement line or going right to it. I have informed the planning director, Stephen Cole, about my visit to your house. In the briefing, brief meeting we had, he did not seem to have any issues either. I wish you luck with building your new garage, and please feel free to contact me if I can assist you with anything else. Sincerely, John Woods," was the deputy director of the operations and maintenance department for the town of Carver. So, that letter now is in the record. I'm going to give it to our clerk so that it can be incorporated into the board file, and if you want to copy this for your own records, you can get it tomorrow when you, when you come back here. All right. Does anybody up here have any questions or comments? Nobody wants to say anything?
Secret to a happy marriage. My garage is 800 feet away from the house. That's the whole secret. The man cave is far away from the house, it works great.
We decided to stay in Carver when we tired here, so we wanted a garage.
No, I think, I think you, I mean, you've been going, this has been going on a while through a long continuous, and you worked really hard with the board to make this as conforming as you possibly could, given the shape of your land.
Right, it's a little strange, both the size and the, and the layout.
I mean, the topography of the land and
With the easement.
With the little lake that I walked around in.
It was a lake that
And plus up over the hill, and then a big drainage, even a bigger lake right behind the, the little hill.
We have the drainage, you guys are indeed, it dissipates, it's gone in a day, it's amazing.
No, but you worked really hard with the board, and I appreciate that.
Anything further? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, I need someone to make the following motion. That the board finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape and/or topography of the structures or a lot, but not affecting the district generally, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to the petitioner, and that relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Is everybody okay making that finding?
Yes.
If so, could I hear a motion?
So moved.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of making that finding, as I just read?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, I'll give you the language on that.
Thank you.
That's bylaw language, word for word. Now, do I hear a motion to grant relief requested, which would be 84, well, how do we want to say this?
To construct a building no larger than
No larger than 784 square feet, the garage, no larger than 784 square feet, and that a variance be given on, for 10 feet. How do we want to characterize that dimensionally?
Site, site 2245B
Yep.
As 10 feet.
Yeah.
And 2245C as
784 feet.
784 feet as per the plan submitted.
You're going to say, yeah, as drawn?
Yeah, as drawn, as per the plan submitted. But we want to, we will refer to those sections, subsections of the bylaw. So, the 10 feet is needed per dimensional relief on setback, right?
Being in front of the house.
Which would be setback?
Yes.
Setback.
It's not dimensional setback, it's being in front of the house.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Happy wife, happy life, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I, I join Ms. Clark in, in thanking you for working with us on this. I know the, the way this lot is shaped is a little odd, and you've got the drainage thing going on and all that water, so
But it's, no, it's been a pleasure, it's a new experience for me, so you've been wonderful. Thank you very much for your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next step, basically, I checked with Mr. Francis, right? This, this word gets
Here's what, here's what happens is, we'll get the decision written up and filed in the town clerk's office. From the day it's filed, there's a 20-day appeal period for all the neighbors here who came and told you you can't work on it for them. After the 20-day appeal period is over, you'll be called by the town clerk to pick up your decision. You take your decision down to the registry of deeds, and it costs $75. You file that, you bring back the certified copy, they'll give, you can ask for one, you'll They'll give, you can ask for one, and you'll get it. You bring that to the building inspector. You can tell him that we've made the decision, and you can kind of start doing plans, but you're technically not allowed to have a building.
Right, until I get the...
Until you have the recorded decision to show him.
Very good.
Okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Stay warm. Like your boots.
Okay.
Oh, one more.
We have one more. Public hearing continued from November 5, 2018, case number 8-26. The petitioners, Clark A. Griffith, trustee, and Suzanne R. Lyons, trustee, PO Box 127 South Carver. The petitioners are requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 7 Lakeview Street in Carver. That's assessors map 8 lot 26F to modify the use of the existing home office established for the purpose of harvesting and billing to an office for rent in a residential agricultural district. So on December 27, I received a letter from the attorney for the petitioners, the attorney being Aaron Burke, who writes, "Dear Board of Appeals, I am the attorney representing the applicant, and this matter was continued to your January 15, 2019 meeting. Please withdraw the application for the special permit for the above-captured property. Please contact me if you have any questions." So they're not intending to go forward with this on the merits. I have no explanation for why that is, but their request is to allow them to withdraw. Unlike another case that was presented earlier this evening, this one is, I think, on the facts and on the merits, much different. So I ask the board and its members if they have any questions or comments with regard to this request to withdraw. Anybody have any concerns about allowing them to withdraw now that the case has been opened?
No, I think...
They were unsure, I think.
I think once we explained the bylaw to him, which he had not had adequately explained to him, they found that what they were requesting was not in the scope of what they wanted to do, actually. So I would make a motion that we close this hearing.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Do I hear a motion to allow the withdrawal?
So moved.
And before we go any further with this, if I could just be allowed to inquire of the board whether this is a withdrawal with prejudice or without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Meaning that they would be allowed to refile?
If they figure that.
So is it the sense of the board that this be a withdrawal without prejudice, subject to them being allowed to refile at some indefinite point in time in the future if they choose?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have a motion already made and seconded on that? Yes, no?
No.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second? That they be allowed to withdraw without prejudice?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that case is withdrawn without prejudice, which brings us to the end of our evening, unless a board member has something that they'd like to bring to the attention of the rest of us. Anything? I have one thing. I'd like to welcome again, before we adjourn for the evening, Alan Germain, who has been very helpful in his comments to the board this evening. And I, for one, am pleased that he was comfortable enough to speak up tonight and have his voice heard. That's why we're all here. So thank you for that, Mr. Germain. We look forward to your contributions in the future, truthfully. Do I hear a motion? Oh, yes.
I have one other, just, you reminded me of something. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Clark for coming tonight because it was her birthday.
Today's your birthday?
I would have brought you flowers. I completely forgot.
It's no big deal, her husband's stuck upstairs, so that's not a problem.
Thank you. And happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
The clock goes backwards for her, by the way. Is this your stuff?
Yep.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I can second, finally.
Yes, you can. Good evening, everyone, and happy New Year to you all. Do I have a vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.